Down to the people to help clean these buildings and keep them safe. Father, you've truly blessed us. Father, we just thank you for loving us so much that you gave your son to be a sacrifice for us and help us just to continue to be a sacrifice unto others. Father, we do that through these meetings and through the work that we do. So Father, again, we just give you all the thanks, praise, glory, and honor for all these things. In the name of your son and our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Campbell La Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here. Okay, welcome to our special meeting, April 26th, 6:00 PM here at the Trumbull County Agriculture and Family Education Center, 520 West Main Street in Cortland. And the purpose of this meeting is to discuss pending and future American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, applications with the applicants, the public, and the press, and to discuss any other ARPA-related matters. We had this meeting yesterday. It was very well-attended. I think we made a lot of progress. We worked out some of the bumps, I think, in the progress there and the process. I think tonight should go a lot smoother, looking at the crowd we have here tonight. And we are going to start out, I guess, with... We are honored to have Tanya Rogers with us here today. Tanya is our legal counsel when it comes to ARPA matters. So when you submit your applications online, after they get... Two or more commissioners decide to move it forward for legal questions to see if it does fit, it goes off to her office. And then she scrutinizes it and makes sure that everything in the application falls within the federal guidelines, so that when we disperse the funds out through the community, they're being used in a proper way, and they're being used, the most responsible use of our taxpayer dollars that fund the program. So she is kind of like the final step of saying thumbs up or thumbs down or modify something. After that happens, it comes back to the board, and then one or more commissioners can put it on the agenda to move it forward, and then we can appropriate the funds. As of now, we've spent about $23 million, and we have about $15 million left in the program. I mentioned yesterday, when most all of you here are representing the townships, small communities, villages, one of my goals as commissioner, when I ran, was to take care of the townships and make sure they have a seat at the table and a voice. And I think through this ARPA funding, I'm doing my best, and I've got consensus with some of the other, both the other commissioners, to get the money out throughout the whole county and disperse it as fairly as we can. A lot of the main programs, we've spent the money on already, have an infrastructure. I think we spent about $8 million on sewer and water. It's going to benefit all of our citizens. A lot of it on maintenance of some of the buildings and our safety services, administration, Mark and Lambert, and some of the other stuff that was spent before I got here. But what my goal is through these meetings is, after we conclude today's meeting, have a clear picture of how much we have left, what areas we need to look to, see where requests we have pending, make sure that if you've had a request in for many, many of you since last May, that you get an answer, that at least we have your application, it is pending, and then what we're going to do with it. There are categories that we have with ARPA. It's not just indiscriminate. We like your idea, we throw you a check. There are qualifications and standards that I'll ask Ms. Rogers to elaborate on here in a minute, that we need to fall in. This money was here for a reason, and we need to tie your spending of the money into one of those reasons to get it back out in the community. We've all been through the pandemic. Now it's time that our community heals, and the best way we can heal is getting this money out to make sure that we are set, not only for the next pandemic that may come our way, but our communities catch up from what we lost and maybe are on a strong path to move further ahead than before the pandemic hit. And that's what I think this money is all about. I would like to see, myself, about half of what's left, get out to the townships. And what I had said yesterday and said in previous meetings, that would leave about $250,000 to $300,000 for each of the townships and small communities or villages, places like McDonald and the city of Cortland that have maybe been left behind by government in the past. Usually when money is coming to Trumbull County, a bulk of our services are now worn in the Southern Belt. I want to see to it that, at least with whatever I can do as President of the Board, that we work to make sure everybody has a fair shake and everybody benefits from this equally. So with that, Ms. Rogers, if you'd like to say a few words about the funding and the funding structure.
Yeah, all right. So I'm Tanya Rogers. I think I have met some of you either as counsel or at the OTA presentation. And so the American Rescue Plan has four categories that the county can spend the money. There's the first category, which is responding to or mitigating the effects of the pandemic. The second category is premium pay for essential workers. The third category is revenue loss, and then the fourth category is sewer, water, and broadband infrastructure. And so the third category, the revenue loss, one, if you're a township, that's probably how you use all of your funds. And that one was pretty broad. You could essentially use it for the provision of any traditionally provided government service. For the county, the county elected the standard allowance, so they were able to use up to $10 million for revenue loss. Under revenue loss, however, they cannot grant, issue grants. So if there is a project that you want and does not fall in category one, two, or four, they cannot grant it. And it's not because we don't like your project, it doesn't mean we don't think it's deserving, but it has to fall within category one, two, or four. So the bulk of the applications I have seen from third parties have to do with category one, and that is the responding to or mitigating the effects of the pandemic. There are some built-in presumptions. Certain lower-income areas are presumed to have been harmed by the pandemic, and there's certain programs that are presumed to be eligible because they serve the community. But the big thing I want to emphasize for anyone submitting an application is, if you want something that's not clearly water, sewer, or broadband, and it's not premium pay, it's going to have to fall into category one. So I'm going to need as much data and documentation as I can from you to show me that but for the pandemic, you would not have incurred this expense, or you would not have had this need. So a common example is new ventilation. That is one of the enumerated uses set forth in the final rule. If a building needs a new HVAC system, if they need a new ventilation system, stuff like that is eligible. A lot of safety services, just, you know, not broadly, but so for every application we just had was $35,000 for a power cost. The fire department I was working with were able to show me their data from 2019 and the number of calls they had, the fuel cost, the labor they had, and the expenses in repairs. And they were able to show me that following the pandemic, due to inflation, their labor has gone up, their fuel has gone up, and their repairs have gone up. So they can no longer afford to buy this cost that they originally thought that they could. So that was a very clear tie of if the pandemic wouldn't have happened, one, we might not have even needed this cost because our volume of calls has gone up 16%, but two, we would have had the funds, but due to the inflation in the fuel costs and labor costs, we can no longer afford it. So that's the kind of direct tie that I'm going to need to see. You know, for third-party parties that are like tourists or, you know, leisure industries, there's a formula where if they have an unemployment rate, if they've lost unemployment at 8% or more within the industry, it can be eligible. So we've had some, you know, like bus tours and stuff like that, they were able to show that connection. So for the first category, again, all the projects I've seen are all good ones, but I need to have enough data as I can to show that this is directly tied to either something that was revealed during the pandemic as a shortfall in provision of services, or the costs and problems created by the pandemic are the reason the township can no longer move forward with this. The other use that is expressly enumerated in the final rule is investments in green space. So that is one of the ones that is directly permitted. So expansion of parks, upgrading playgrounds, things like that are eligible. And so those are the kinds of the programs. And again, I believe that all these programs are great, they really are, but as much documentation as you can. I just saw an application for a really cool little mini-city project that's a park. It's a really cool project, but I had to get some more information because I didn't have quite enough information when I initially received it. But it was, again, it was investment in green space, so it's one of the ones that's going to be eligible under category one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. The best way we kind of did this, we are live, people can watch us, we're on, we're live streamed, and we're video and audio. So if anybody has questions pertaining to project, if they have input on their project, we need you to come up to the front, state your name and where you're from, so that they... Microphone is up front here, for this to be recorded and it be fair for everybody. Yesterday, we had some problems. People in the back of the room, they couldn't hear, and we had a lot of complaints, a lot of calls, that they only could hear half the meeting. So we want to make sure that everybody has full access. There are some trustees and people that couldn't be here tonight that did request in advance to ask if we were going to be on so they can watch it or have their fiscal officer watch it to understand how to do the grant a little more fully. We do have a portal, they call it. When you submit your ARPA funds, you submit them online, you follow the instructions that are on the commissioner's website, follow the link. Mr. Masaki is our point person on the ARP funds. He's the one that gets the stuff offline and then records it, records what the request is, and then notifies us when we have something or makes sure that we know that we have something that was requested. It eventually makes its way to where, once we hear a pitch from someone or any commissioner, like I said, can discuss it publicly in a public meeting and ask for the consensus of another commissioner to move it forward to legal. Where Tanya will look at it, and then if it comes back okay, then any commissioner can ask her to be put on the agenda for a vote in regards to that. We do kind of construct a little bit more of a plan of delineating what's out there first, and we did some research on that yesterday. We'll do a little more today. The big thing is to make sure if you requested something, you know that you are on here, and we do have it recorded. We found a couple of them that weren't, but some of them were kicked back, and the people knew about it, just never requested it back or never put it back into the portal again. And then we had a few yesterday that were presented yesterday, but they were not presented online yet. So the people are working on that, getting them online the right way, so we can electronically track it and follow through it to make sure nothing falls through the cracks. And so with that said, if anyone wants to come forward and discuss their project or bring their project up, we're going to allot it with the size of the room here, the three minutes per person or per entity. And like I said, be respectful, keep it ARPA-related, and we'll have people stand right up here and address the chair from there and discuss your project.
I want to say for clarity, though, and I've been asking for this for a long time. What's been going on is we get these applications, people are sending them in, and they've sent them in before we've even had an online application available. So we end up, and I have, as you can see, files underneath here, and this completely full of applications. And then they come to us with this, post-it, add to ARPA file. So we have no proper process for tracking these internally. And I know there's been a lot of discussion among the board. I've been asking to develop a spreadsheet that actually shows the request, the requister, the benefitted area, it's a political subdivision, if it's countywide, then we put countywide, the category of the request, not just the ARPA category, which would be left for Tanya and our legal counsel to decide, but just the category so we can see at a glance what the projects are, what the applications are. We want to be, I personally want to be able to give to everyone in the community, including people who are just now looking at projects, to come up with a list so that they can see what's been funded already and included on this list, not just the pending ones, but the ones that have already been approved. So you can see the type of projects that are eligible, and you might be able to find something in your community that you can do. And I think that that would be a good tool to have, but there's been a lot of debate. It appears the board doesn't want to designate any employees to do this, even though I've asked them. We have Mr. Masaki, who works for another elected official's office, and we have an attorney who I don't think should be paid. I appreciate what you give paid, but to do an Excel spreadsheet, I'm not so sure about that. But I'd like to find out if the board would do that so that we can give the community a sheet so that they can see what has been already approved, what already has been submitted, and they can see, you know, maybe there's something that you want, but you see that in another community, they're already doing something that's going to benefit your area also. So I think it would be good for everyone to see that. For an example, I just spoke to a trustee who can't be here, and she has an idea for a project that's going to benefit four townships. Now, wouldn't it be nice if everyone in the public was able to see that she was submitting something that would benefit their township too, so that they might not be interested in duplicating an effort? So would the board like to designate someone now that we're here at a public forum to do that task?
We discussed this at length yesterday.
And the answer was no. So I was...
Correct. And I'm going to give my explanation. I was floored up. The request was asked for all these things, to designate an employee to do all this stuff, where we each get paid over $100,000 a year to look at this stuff and do this, and we can do this. We have the information we need. The things come in, we can look at the portal, we can talk to Mr. Masaki every single day and have a meeting with him to get an update on what's there, what's not here. We can make whatever charts we want or do whatever we want to do to promote this. To have a staff member that's already signed doing something else to take the vision that she wants out of her head and paint the picture she has in her head, it's never going to be correct, it's never going to be right, it's never going to be enough. And we've proven that with all the updates and the different charts the staff has been working on the last couple of months. So everything we need is right here. Everything we need is right here. If the public has questions on it, they're free to look at it at any time, they're free to come and meet with Mr. Masaki, they're free to listen to our meetings, come to our public meetings and attend and see what other communities are doing to get the idea and hear about them and hear the presentations. We've had many presentations throughout the community. A piece of paper excelled with all the details of something, many of it that we can't expect the clerk to even understand what this is. It's hard enough for us to understand it, and Tanya's a lawyer, and I'm sure she doesn't understand it all with everything that comes in. It would be nearly impossible to designate somebody and say, you do this work for me and give it to me the way that I want it, and that's the way it is.
Someone from Newton Falls, so that they would volunteer to do it, they could probably have it done in about a day. And I think that it would be useful for everyone to have it. As a public body, I think that we owe it to everyone to show what we've spent, what we've already spent money on, what we've already appropriated funds for, and to let everyone know where all the...
You're not going to second on that, so we're going to move forward with positive stuff.
Those are all worthwhile questions, and, you know, we can discuss that. A lot of people came to this meeting. We're wasting people's time with administrative decisions that happen within the board. This is not what this meeting is for.
You said to wait till tomorrow, and we'll discuss it here.
Again, interrupting, that's fine. We're here to listen to the people and their asks and their, what their applications, the questions they have about their applications. The administrative duties of that that goes into that, we can discuss at a later date.
And we did have, we did have four or five people walk out of the meeting yesterday that got fed up with the banner going back and forth. And I got two apologies today from trustees that called and said, hey, no offense to you and the board, I couldn't take it anymore, back and forth, hearing her argue and bicker. So we're not going to do that here tonight. We're going to respect your time first and foremost. So with this...
Another thing, if there are people here who are even watching online, it is not required that you come and vague and present your project. It is required that you follow the proper ARPA process, which is the application through the portal. So don't feel that if you don't come to a meeting that you can't put in an application. You can come to any commissioner's meeting, I want to discuss it in a little bit more detail as well.
On the one hand, you're saying we're not doing anything, we're not doing it transparently. We hold these meetings to be transparent. And now you're, no, 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 and you're saying, you're contradicting yourself, saying that they should come to our meetings. That's what we've been saying all along. That's why we're holding this meeting. As a matter of fact, Commissioner, you were charged with scheduling this meeting, and you never did.
This is what we're doing. Okay, so...
Okay. We're going to move forward.
Waiting for staff to do something.
Show hands, how many people want us to move forward on this? For your benefit. Okay, any opposed? Okay, let's move forward. Jason, you have the floor. Come on up and identify yourself.
What do you want me to stand at?
Right over here, sir, so they can catch you with the... Or us. We just want to make sure we get your voice.
My name is Jason Cook, and I'm the president of the Health Yards and Paws Project in Brookfield, Ohio, and we're in the process of building our new shelter in the city of Warren. And I will say that I have not seen it so bad for our dogs and cats in this county and across the nation in my entire lifetime. And I can attribute that to what happened during COVID, and I'll justify that with a couple of things. Number one, our intakes have tripled since 2019. So we have dogs showing up, owners, either because of COVID, they lost their job, they're losing their housing. Our veterinary expenses are just astronomical right now. So they call and they say, I can't afford the surgery for my dog, I can't afford medication for my dog. And they end up surrendering their dogs. So I submitted an application for $25,000 to help our new shelter so that we can deal with this influx of dogs and cats that are coming from Trumbull County, and I don't see it getting any better anytime soon. Inflation is through the roof, and things cost more, and people are struggling with housing and feeding themselves. And I don't want to see the dogs and cats of this county pay the price. So I'm committed to helping all of these dogs and cats and getting this shelter built. And so that's why I submitted my $25,000. And as far as data, statistical information, I'd be happy to provide our intakes from 2019 versus what they are this year, showing how our vet expenses have just gone through the roof. And the volume of calls that we get every day from people who often, more often than not, say, you know, I brought in a dog when COVID was here and I was working at home, and now I got a job, and I can't be with my dog, and I don't know what to do, the dog's tearing up the house, I feel bad, and, you know, it's just, there's no end in sight. And so I'd be happy to provide any more information. I would like to get clarity if my application was submitted and...
It is. You are in the portal here, a $25,000 request.
Do I need to submit any additional information?
No. See, the issue is that we don't actually have a proper process in place. So yours is probably one of these little post-its that says it's been received.
But that's okay.
It's in the portal here, so that means that anytime we can pull it out and do it.
Yeah. But the problem that I'm seeing is that we're coming to a bottleneck here, and we have a lot of applicants that, you know, that want an answer. And what we've been traditionally doing is they've been having a meeting, which is not our official meeting, where they'll send something over for a legal opinion. Once it goes for a legal opinion, we've already invested the money in that process, and normally it just gets pushed through. What I'd prefer to see is the commissioners have a separate meeting to go over all the applicants, decide which ones we're going to try to push through, and then get the opinion on those instead of possibly paying for a legal service for a project that we might not fluff. Does that make sense?
Kind of like what we did yesterday, push us something through for $900,000 because you brought six people with you, and we had to do it overnight and take everybody's time.
All right. So to answer your question, if you've already submitted the application and sent it through, once it comes to me, I will have your email, I will just email you and ask you for the data. That's what I've been doing for those who have submitted them and didn't know to provide additional information. So you'll get an email from me. And for anyone else who has already submitted, that's how it will go. If you are submitting something, I just ask that you attach as much information as you can to the application, and I'll streamline it a little bit.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
I just want to say, on behalf of Jason, we work very closely with his nonprofit with our dog pounds. The work that he does in the community is nothing short of amazing. He's a rock star. We try to keep up with him if we can, does a lot of the overflow for us that we can't get to. I know it's a worthwhile project, Jason. I look forward to moving along with you.
Thank you.
And next. Don't be shy. This is your chance to pitch it to us.
I have not submitted in the portal yet, so, but I did bring information.
What's your name, ma'am, where you're from?
Robin Sambrini. I'm from Hubbard. I'm the Hubbard City Councilperson, but I'm here on behalf of the Hubbard Historical Society. I am the president of the Hubbard Historical Society. So if I may. So if I understand correctly, I do need to submit this in the portal, though.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so I will do that. Just right off the bat, Hubbard Historical Society, like other historical societies in the county, we had to shutter our doors during the pandemic. And it's really hard to bounce back from that. We lost dues, revenue from members paying dues, we lost revenue from donations. We have, you know, difficult time. We have a house, we have a house, it's a museum, we have pictures, I had included pictures in the packet. People in the community, which is both Hubbard City and Hubbard Township, have entrusted us with their historical artifacts. And we, you know, we have, had a leak in the roof that we had to fix. So we're asking for funds for the new roof, some painting that needs done. We have restoration of the kitchen sink in the home, work on the grounds, and to recover past utility expenses. Like I said, we lost all our revenue, and we have about 40 members right now. So, you know, we're the sole caretaker of the McBride House. It's just like your house, it's just like my house, it has utilities. I push my lawnmower down to cut the grass, you know? So we're respectfully asking for just under $25,000 to help us make it through so we can until the time that we can build new revenue. Is there any question?
You submitted the application in the portal. If you have any financial data that will show the difference in dues that you lost, that would be helpful as we just...
Difference in dues.
Yeah, so if you had certain amount of dues in 2019, you can show that they plummeted in 2020. That would be helpful. Or any fundraising, or had to cancel any information like that, we'll kind of just streamline the analysis.
Absolutely. Okay. There are some, you know, I do have some of the, on the last page, I do have some financial figures on here. You're going to, you're not going to see 2020 was the heart of the pandemic, because I have no idea where that gave the word went. I don't know if it flew out of the mailbox at the McBride House, it's just, it disappeared. Because the house was closed up for a whole year. So I have 21 and 22, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
As far as historical, which category of that, because that's what we've already done.
We've done two. It is an impacted industry, I think it's more museums, yeah. That would be in the, that would be in category one. Yeah, responding to adverse impacts of the pandemic. And it would be one of the industries that was adversely impacted. We've done that analysis, I think, with one other historical society.
Okay, who would like to go next? Tom?
Good afternoon. I'm Tom Shea, the fiscal officer from Brayceville Township. Here tonight on behalf of the board of trustees. With me is our trustee chairman, Jeff Tucker. We also have a former trustee, Dennis Coots, who's here tonight. And I'm also joined by two of our residents. Ray and Marilyn Hall came out to discuss about our requests for funding to extend the Blueprint Prosperity Waterline, Phase Two, Route 82 and down side 34. funding to extend the Blueprint Prosperity Waterline Phase Two, Route 82 and down 534. As you may recall, the Board of Trustees sent letters to your board on November 2nd, 2021, and most recently is July 19th, 2022, requesting ARP funding towards this project. As a township, our number one request from our residents are water lines. We must be in a spot that just has bad water. But the disappointing thing is.
The disappointing thing is.
Yes. So the bad news is that something we can't directly provide to our residents. This particular area, there's lots of issues. Some residents have silt in their water, not plenty of water, gas. And particularly, I guess, the troubling thing is there's a section along that that has arsenic in their water. And I guess that's the original build out of the water line was when they discovered arsenic in the Vaughn Elementary School several years ago. And that's kind of what led to building the first, well, not the first phase of Blueprint, but the lower section that started the line from Newton Falls. And if you could indulge me, I brought some of my residents that wanted to speak specifically about the water, so they could come out after me.
Sure. And I'd like to hear from Gary also, because he did bring this up in yesterday's meeting. It is in the portal. And it was something that we had discussed in the past, some of the past meetings was one of the.
And I know that the loan was received, which we were very happy to hear. But I guess our ask is, is we're hopeful that the package that's put together is very similar to the first phase without front-end assessments and making it affordable to residents and someone of a similar program.
Well, that is my intention for Phase Two, to make it as close in cost as I can to the Blueprint Phase One project. There is an application pending for the design engineering contract. Burgess and Nyquil was determined to be the most qualified for that work. And I put in an ARP request for $435,000 to cover the design engineering contract. And that is what the commissioners. So that is our next step. I renominated it into the WSRLA. And hopefully we'll get a larger principal forgiveness package built around because that price has escalated from the original. It only had 800 and some thousand of principal forgiveness in it. And I'm seeing that I needed about a million and a half to make it happen.
Gary, of that $8 million that we kind of had accounted that you had spent already, and Ma would mention he had his head out about $10 million appropriated for you. Is that part of that $8 million or is this?
Yes, yes. It's on the spreadsheet here, Commissioner, that I handed out yesterday. You see here Braceville Township Blueprint Phase Two, $435,000 for the design engineering contract.
Perfect.
Okay. Perfect. So that project is progressing and awaiting that award for the principal climbing for the ARP so we can finalize the contract with Burgess and Nyquil for the engineering.
And it's, there's nothing more that Braceville needs to do or the residents need to do to further this long. It's hot in the pipeline.
Exactly. Yes.
I think that's what I showed you.
Perfect. Yeah, no, I mean, we, we were hopeful that after the first phase, there was a discussion of a quick progression into a second phase. And, you know, and I think we, there were surveys sent out at the end of the first phase, which was several years ago now, and COVID happened. And I think it's, you know, we, people call us and they're like, what's happening with the water? You know, people are getting water trucked in. We, they had a resident that was planning on drilling a new well. He said, do I wait for the county to do something or do I drill a new well? And they went out and drilled a new well because they've never seen water. And, you know, I mean, we gotta provide for your families. So we decided we're just gonna go and do it.
Tom, we certainly recognize the challenges with water. When we started the Blueprint project in 2017, a project that we said could never be built.
Yeah.
We got Phase One built. We recognize that Phase Two is equally as important. The water quality out there is just a public health matter. And, you know, Gary's been diligent about it. Without him on the first phase and getting that largest water line in recent Trumbull County history, maybe at all Trumbull County history, and that principal forgiveness we were able to get to assist the people. I have no doubt that we're gonna pass the design engineering through under ARPA. We'll get moving on to the second phase.
Thank you.
I believe that was the map that I showed you last week.
Yeah, you did show. Would you guys, would you still like to speak?
I'm Raymond Hall. My wife Marilyn. We're from Braceville, Trumbull County. We're one of those that have silt in our water. This is where, we've lived there for.
1975.
This is a repeat from about two years ago. We canvassed all of 82, which the line starts down the center. And then we canvassed 534 to come to ramp. And all, we, we had everybody sign up that they would like to have one. And two years later, we're, we're still in the same spot. We're making it. And it was one new thing that came up. This year we was without electric for five days. We would have had water, I wouldn't have had to go down to the center. I'm 75. Carry water home, put it in the back of my toilet. But, you know, that could have been eliminated by other things. But that's just one possibility, not to mention having some decent water in our house and make our home work. So I'm glad you listened.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
Yes, sir.
Hello? I'm Pat Alisia. Lived all my life, Trumbull County. Don't know anybody in the room. Kind of know, oh, we gotta go over here, Bob. See, I know Bob. See?
Yeah.
Where's this camera?
You know, you start.
Gotta be something.
Nice spot, right?
It's my last name. I just got one of these.
It's A-U-L-I-Z-I-A. Well, don't seem to know anybody around here. Probably because I worked, I had an office in Cleveland, Columbus. I was with a company called Cisco Systems, the internet company, the one that brings the technology. Well, that's the product that I'm trying to say we can do something here in Trumbull County. All the townships right here. In Cleveland and in 180 countries, we've actually created a training course, just a training course that enables people to take the classes and come out of the classes, get a certification, and actually go to work. 80% of the people get hired after taking these classes at approximately $70,000 to $80,000 a year. Warren, Trumbull County, the average wage, if you Google it on the internet, is about $72,000 to be a network engineer. Questions about where you work. You work for everywhere that has networks. You can work for AT&amp;T, Spectrum. You can work for the buildings, the city of Warren, all the networking that our companies did. All of those places require engineers. And again, I don't know if this is the right place to be involved, to try to get this funding for the students. You know, there's other ways. But I just see all the grants coming. And right when COVID hit, closed all the schools. We were teaching at the higher level education, closed all the schools and all the certification centers. Well, we're back open now. 12 weeks, Tuesday and Thursday night, four hours a night. People come out at the end, in this case, 12 weeks. Absolutely, the number is 80% get employed. Start at about $58,000, $60,000 a year, and then end up averaging the 70s, 80s, 90s a year, which gives us the ability to retain our population. It gives us that thing called the technical corridor that they keep acting like we are, which we aren't. It all happened in 2000 when Cisco created this product called the router. Technically, it was a wonderful thing. It connects different computers to internet or that computer to maybe the information at Huntington Bank. So the teller can see your balance in your checkbook. Down in Columbus, the router was created. The chairman at Cisco was told, we have no idea. We want to use these things. We have no idea how to buy it, install it, design it, support it. So that's where these classes were created. The classes were free from Cisco. The problem is we have to pay a trainer. We have to have lab equipment because it's onsite, lab equipment also. Again, it's possible to do, we were originally scheduled to do it in Mahoning County. A fellow named Frank Fuda said to me, Pat, can you do this in Trumbull County? I said, yeah, Frank. We brought it to ETI. Perfect timing. Pandemic kicks in. Closed all the schools March 16th, all the testing centers. So now what I'm saying is the approximate cost per student is $1,700 or $7,815. It's a pretty expensive course. For 12 weeks is what we're running it now. But the trainers are expensive. I mean, they're several hundred dollars an hour to bring somebody to teach this type of technology. Again, I can fill out the information, but I don't want to take any money away from our necessary roads and services, you know? But if there's a way, if we could fund 10 of these people, $70,000, $80,000, the return, at least we're gonna start the procedure again. And then we could start working from getting this industry into our city, whether we do it at Kent State Trumbull Branch. Wright Center is agreeing to offer the space. So really, our costs are only resulting in the technology hardware and the training instructors. So I have a cost of attendance broken out. If you would like, I can fill out that information and see if that comes together.
I think this has a very slight tie-in to what we're talking about here today with the application process for ARPA. But what I would recommend is, if you have information on what you're talking about, get it to our clerk. This is something we can discuss, maybe at a public meeting, or maybe some superintendent, some business leader, something through the community. It may be more adaptable to have someone adopt the program that way for their employees or for their entity. But I don't know right now that this is 100% in the ARPA.
Thank you for acknowledging that we have, you know, issues. You probably should take precedent when people have water.
Sure.
But I do not want to minimize what your efforts are. These are important. Workforce development is critical. There might be some other avenues that I could connect you with to promote that if you want to.
Yeah, that would be great. I do have some information. I think I stuffed it in the mailbox yesterday. Many of the commissioners saw it. I put the one manila envelope in there. That was, I forgot that. I'll get something from the commissioner. Again, certainly don't want to take anything away from infrastructure. It's just that this is another item that possibly we can recognize. If there was a little bit of money left, maybe this is a way.
And one of the things that we, that I got a call on today was someone who wants to do a center that would benefit some of the northernous towns and training, training and childcare to get people back to work after the pandemic, which would be, which should be eligible. And a lot of times it's single parents that don't have the ability to have the daycare services. And they can have some kind of childcare and some kind of training. That would be.
Well, Commissioner, one more thing. This training that I've turned into doing it in 12 weeks, in Cleveland, we were doing it in eight weeks at Tri-C and spectacular results. Tri-C, Cuyahoga Community College, is actually like the Harvard of network academy in the world. It's amazing. But it really took off strongly because the engineers that were our Cleveland Columbus offices, those Cisco engineers were the trainers. We don't have so many Cisco engineers here in Trumbull County. But we'll be teaching these people to get out, get the experience, and become the trainers. I'll get you the information. Again, it may not tie into COVID as much as, you know, having problems like that.
I think it's a wonderful idea. And one of the things that gets lost, when you talk about the federal guideline, you know about the waters, you know about property, you know, there's a workforce development is a key to that. When I, this first came out, I made the commissioners a guideline too, but I still use it to this day. I'm still adhering to it. But $1 million towards workforce development is a pittance for me, I think, because it's that readiness. It's, one of the things that we learned from our regional championship workforce, where we collaborate and we build agencies in the area, is that one of the biggest struggles that they have is the ready workforce and jobs in the future and the training that those need. This seems to fall in line right with.
Let me give you an example. A close friend of mine, who's part of our organization, was running the network at Sumo Hospital in Akron. And he moved on and started doing contracts. So he was contracted by AT&amp;T to do Dow Chemical in Michigan. Well, the contract project was fine except for the manpower didn't come from the US. They brought in, I think it was 30 or 40 Korean people to live in Michigan to be able to do the installation. I mean, we have the same thing going on Lordstown. Whoever wins Lordstown's contracts, if it's AT&amp;T or any of those companies, they don't necessarily invest in the manpower.
Well, in Trumbull County notoriously has been behind in all that. We want to change that as far as broadband goes, as far as workforce readiness goes, as far as technological skills go.
I mean, more of that, that's where I've been the last 30 years. I mean, the reason I probably didn't get as much interaction in Warren, Trumbull County was, yeah, in the morning, I'd drive to Cleveland because we were all onsite back then. Cleveland, I might drive to my office in Columbus. But we did everything, everything from the Cleveland Clinic, the new building that was new back then for St. Elizabeth, out in Morden, all of the Trumbull County work. The engineers that were at our company after I left Cisco, 80 of these field engineers. One guy was a guy that retired from Goodyear and took the class at Tri-C. He became, after 30 years, he retired. He became one of the best engineers we had. My company had 80 engineers working for us and it was paid well. And a lot of them were my cousins from Warren, Ohio. And, you know, all the family was brought into it as fast as they could. Well, it's time to expand into our entire population. So I will get, you know, one of you the information.
Thank you.
Last thing I wanted to say, I'm over time. The training, there's no math in this training. You don't have to know calculus aid. You don't have to do that. It's every gender. It's every race, all of that type of person that you're talking about, Commissioner. They would be fine. You learn this. You go out with a team of engineers.
Single moms can be good at math, too.
Well, that's possible. My daughters haven't proven that yet. But I believe you. The thing is, you think, jeez, I'm gonna be an engineer. I'm gonna be a certified engineer and I don't have to do all the math. There's no reason to be afraid of these type of classes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Who would like to go next? Yes, sir, chief.
Sean Rentsch. I work for the Kent County Township Police Department, Police Chief of the area. We submitted, well, I originally submitted a application with the former commission. Okay. And after the election, we submitted another one. So apparently there's two of them. Okay, all right. I believe I did receive an email requesting more information, but I was told to hold off because the, the one, it didn't involve the pandemic, but the other one did.
Remind me that something.
What we're building is a project with the police department. In just a little background, we raised $150,000 approximately in the township to go towards us. Our soft bid was $350,000. Our soft bid was 350. Okay, and I was just asking for 200,000. Yes, yes. We went to the bank and asked them about getting a loan. They would give us 200,000 dollars, but the payment every year would be approximately 39,000 dollars. So that's basically something to sell. And obviously, with being a small township, we don't have a huge budget. So that was definitely kind of put a straight on our budget. But the former building that we had, we have sold that. The people that have purchased it, they're letting us store our vehicles and they're for now in our other property. We own a lot of just stuff we use for executives and stuff that I've brought these. But we also have our three police vehicles that we want to. We get a file on your two engineers. We have the last one. So.
Chief, we have you in the portal here. I have you at 100,000 dollars asked on this.
That was the original, I believe. Or maybe the one I submitted with Commissioner, it was 200,000 dollars. The last one may have been 100,000.
It's 100,000.
And I was, I was obliged not to ask for the 200. That's why I asked for the 100 then, but really need the 200. So the original.
Good.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
I have a question for the attorney. That building, the police garage, does that follow the ARPA guidelines? Because if it does, I'd like to know the rationale.
Yeah, that's going to be a tougher one. Again, not because we don't believe that they need the money, but we need to show a tie-in for situations like that where there's a need for capital improvement. Again, capital improvements in general are going to be difficult to justify. The reason for that is because the final rule really emphasizes trying to fund programs that directly serve the community rather than just improving buildings. And so if there is a program that a township needs help funding and that might free up funds for capital improvement, that might be a better way to go about it. And again, if it's something you can show that there's a direct connection to, whether it has to do with increasing fuel costs, increasing label costs, if you're having a significant increase in runs and you can show the data that you need another cruiser and that frees up funds from that kind of thing, that's going to be an easier sell. Capital improvements in general are going to be tougher. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else? I want more township back. Do you guys have anything? Just learning?
We're adding information. Very, we're going to rework ours.
Okay. Take them.
Can I just add something?
Yes, sir. Sean from, Sean Rents from Kent City Township, again.
Previous to the pandemic, I did a little research of my own as far as how much it would cost the resources and whatnot for a garage. And with fair labor, we probably would have been able to get about 100,000 dollars to get the garage built along with paying labor. After our soft bid was 350,000 dollars, we just got that one months ago. How long ago was that provision?
It's over 400,000 dollars.
Yeah, so it's went up over 400,000 just due to the increase in prices of resources. And we're going to give people jobs to give them also, or stipulate the economy.
I can see a post-pandemic supply chain and.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Tie-in, maybe?
I'll get it. I have your.
Thank you.
Yes. Name and where you're from first?
Christine Coe from the University of United Way of Trumbull County. And I'm here today, thanks again for this opportunity. I was here yesterday to observe. I have been losing my voice. I will try to sneak up, but I was here to clarify our ask and maybe to get some clarification on our ask. But we did have a big ask. We went in and we asked for a million dollars. And that's partly, if you don't know what we do, we serve all of Trumbull County. Our mission is to be united and help the children and families thrive. But we are a little bit different. We're positioned in a way that we provide direct services and indirect services by funding programs here in Trumbull County. So during the pandemic, we were, we were pretty, we were hit pretty hard in terms of our revenue. So it kind of came on the heels of a loss of GM, which was one of our largest contributors. So during the pandemic, we lost our ability to really fundraise, to get out there in front of people, to do any kind of events to really make up for that loss. One thing I want to just kind of stress here, some of the things that we were doing during the pandemic that we did spend some of our funding on is we have a united initiative for diabetes. So we were able to fund prescriptions for people, individuals who have diabetes. There's been some bills passed now that have helped seniors in that position, but during that time, we gave vouchers for over 250 prescriptions for individuals with diabetes. We continue to help people in their homes who want to stay in their homes but don't have the funds or the resources or just the physical resources to be able to maintain their properties, their land, that type of thing. We get volunteers, we get funding, you go out and we help with that. The Imagination Library, maybe some of you have heard of that. It's a very popular program in Trumbull County. We are the affiliate for that. And there's about 6,000 kids signed up that get books every month. We don't have to send out the books, but we're the affiliate. We are fundraising for 50% of that. The state helps with the other 50%. So our ask was a three-part ask, and that's what I want to clarify today. So one of that was for revenue loss. And we lost about 42% of our revenue between 2019 and 2023. I believe, as I read and interpreted the final rule, that we would qualify to get assistance for our revenue loss through the ARPA funds. I wanted to clarify that, if that is true. I guess that would be category one. I didn't bring it up.
We want category one.
That would be category one, not loss of.
So revenue loss has to do with the actual political subdivisions revenue loss. And so, yes. And so if a, if a business or a nonprofit is going to submit a request under category one based on revenue loss, there has to be two things. You have to show you lost the revenue, but then you have to show that you're using it for an eligible expenditure.
Okay.
And so we would need to know how you're going to use it to make sure it's still eligible under category one.
And the other, the other thing I think we were talking about before, and I want to see the supplies to this as well, this is countywide. So you have to be able to, don't you have to be able to prove that it's benefiting the township and the county and not just the urbanized areas that got direct funds as well?
Yeah, when we're talking about, well, it just depends on the project and the specific request. So, yeah, I would, in the application, specify how you intend to use those funds, what programs or projects. And again, funding of programs is generally favored by the rule over anything else.
Okay, so we did already submit our application. So I don't know, we can, it isn't the portal, United Way.
What programs are they?
So the programs that we were, we fund 21 programs. So we are somewhat of a pass-through organization in that sense, but we also have direct funding. So I just need the few ones, or I'm sorry, direct services that lead to here in Trumbull County. The second part of the ask, I'm going to move on to the third part and go back to the second part. The third part was for programming. And that ask was about 640,000 dollars, all related to basically education. We just call it United for Kids. There was eight components to that, eight different programs to that. So we did a lot of research on this with the local schools to find out what their needs were, because we're already in Warren City Schools and some other schools with a reading grade by eight program, bringing kids up to make sure that they're reading at grade level by grade three. So we're already, we already have that program. It's been tried and true. There are a couple of other programs that are also being successful, but for the schools, but they have lost funding. So we step in, we provide funding, we pay teachers, we pay for supplies, we do that type of thing. So what we learned in our research is that the kids are struggling with math more so than reading after the pandemic because the parents could help with math, but they couldn't help, I'm sorry, help with reading, but they weren't comfortable helping with math. Where they were also, we've also been told that the social emotional needs of the kids have really been, it's been disruptive in their lives and then in the schools as well. So that was one of the things that we wanted to address. We're doing that through basically the after-school program or in-school programming, whatever works for the school district that we're talking with. So a couple of them with the pro- after, some during lunch, just depends. Academic support and social emotional support. We're told that enrichment to stimulated classes and resources were important. That would be new to us. That isn't something that we've done before. Kindergarten readiness. And then just some of the other things. We have a story walk that United Way is putting in downtown Warren, but this is to keep kids healthy. We're really focused on keeping kids healthy. We'd like to put a couple more of those story walks out throughout the community. Those aren't a high expenditure, but it's something that we're doing. Continue with our Imagination Library. We do have a funder, but we are concerned that, and the state has encouraged us to ask for funding for the Imagination Library from the county. It would be, it would be hard to raise the money if we were to let lose our funder. So they are recommending that we request funds for that. We also have wraparound services like eye exams and glasses. We partner with Site for All on that and school pantries. And we've done just provide food, we're providing essentials, clothing. We just put refrigerators in a couple of the pantries so that they can have healthier food for their kids. So those are the types of programs that we're talking about. Do those fall into the category that you're asking?
So lost instructional time, emphasis on physical and mental health is in enumerated use. Food pantries are in enumerated use. All of that are identified. Because this is going to be a larger number, it'll probably catch someone's eye. So if you could share with us the data that you have. And again, once I get your application, I'll email you. So if you could just share with us the data that you have that led you to decide on these programs, and that would be attached to any letter I write. And then if an auditor has a question, they can just flip through and see, okay, this is what we're examining on.
Okay. And what, what communities are you looking at? Everything specifically that I've heard mentioned the city of Warren. And I want to find out outside of the city of Warren.
So outside of, the city of Warren is in a different position because they get funding that these other school districts don't get. And I'm not saying, I don't know all the details, but they have other funding coming to them that some of the other school districts don't have. So we've talked to Lakeview, we've talked Bascom, we've talked to Newton Falls, Nile City over time, but the most recent would be Bascom and Lakeview. We researched and they gave us data to access from the Ohio Framework, from, there's a report called the Aspen Report, but then data related to the kids right here in Trumbull County as well. So we'd like, the reason we were saying we didn't name the schools in the application is because we always are seeking other funding. So if we seek funding and we get that for a specific school district, we would like to expand it to a different school district and offer the same service. So we don't, we don't want to duplicate, we don't want to take funding that, you know, we may have from another funder. But we do, really do understand how important it is to have the infrastructure here in Trumbull County. We went in with a big ask, not knowing what all the asks were. We tried to, in all of those eight categories under, we're calling it United for Kids, we did put a dollar amount there to prioritize in the context of all of the other requests that you're receiving.
Are we able to identify how much of it is being kept by the agency for administration?
By us for administration? Yes, we can definitely identify that. Is that something? Yes.
Yeah. So what, if it's granted, assuming it is, we would enter into what's called a sub-grant agreement, and that specifically spells out how much can be retained for administrative purposes.
That's not a problem, yeah.
Um, it doesn't necessarily have a certain amount. It's just we would set it and then they couldn't exceed it.
Okay, so that would be for the.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you, did you apply for Warren's ARPA money?
We, so just to be transparent, and we were not. That was going to be more than, yeah. We have just been encouraged to do that, but I will tell you, I just took this position in July and it's been pretty busy. There's been a lot of things happening. So I wasn't clear on what funding was available through the city and through the county. I just was.
Twenty-eight million?
The county, the city?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So with the county, for all of our people in Trumbull County are receiving 38 million.
Right.
City of Warren, 40,000 people, 36, I think, got 28 million. So they, you know, from, just from what I'm hearing, it sounds like a lot of what your focus is, is in the city. And so I'd like to see.
Well, it really is, yes, though. Yeah, I'd like, I would like to reiterate that again, because Warren City Schools does receive funding.
It would have to be specified.
It would have to be specified if it was from the county, in my opinion, the only way I would agree with anything is if I knew that it was recorded in a fashion that the township areas and places outside the cities were.
Yes, and we serve all of Trumbull County. And once again, yeah.
I understand, but this would be project specific or something?
Yeah, and if it's project specific, we can name the schools. Again, we avoided that so that we weren't handcuffing ourselves if we were to get funding from another source and be able to support one of those initiatives. Last one, because I don't want to keep you timed, I know I'm on overtime, is we wanted to start a program, and you've probably heard the Lee Foundation has started something similar to a grassroots funding for even potentially groups that aren't nonprofits who could be their fiscal sponsor. We would like to get out there into all the areas of Trumbull County, including Warren in this case, to fund maybe up to 3,000 to 5,000 dollars. I might have put a number in here of like 4,000 to be able to benefit those grassroots organizations specifically how they were impacted by COVID-19. So there's a lot of issues that have come out of COVID-19. There's a lot of items out there, but they can't necessarily get funded. We would act as fiscal sponsor. I will also mention, there's a lot, there are United, I should say a lot, in the state of Ohio that were funded with county ARPA funds because it took the administrative burden out of the county, because it's a lot of small funding that we were talking about here. This is something we've been wanting to do. This would give us opportunity to do that. So I don't know if that falls under any particular category, but we would also like to do that. But as I said, you know, we did categorize this. We did put an amount by each different program so that we can choose what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to be next? No questions, stupid. We want you to get your questions answered here. Come on up, sir.
Kevin Pires, just have a general question. Mentioned 23 million dollars and 15 million's left. Is that correct?
Yes.
What is the total amount of requested compared to 15 million dollars?
Over 20 million right now.
That's right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get it. That's what's asked.
That's what's.
And a lot of the groups, as we have these meetings, we've already had some say, hey, ask for this, probably need this.
So right now, we're in 20 and counting.
Correct.
And there's only 15 counties.
And that's okay.
That's what I wanted to know.
That's why we're going to prioritize the best of our ability to make sure what we do have left gets accurately out there to the people that maybe already came to the table, let the other people come and eat first before they come back again. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question that has nothing to do with the ARPA money or anything. I'm just thinking, all the stuff we're doing with the plumbing, all those sewer water lines, are we forward-thinking? Why aren't we thinking about burying the power lines?
We are. There, that's, that's talks that, that's for another place.
Right here, knows how to get the money. I think that's the smartest idea we should go. I don't know if anybody else thinks the same way.
There's a lot of things going on with the planning commission regarding fiber optic and that type of stuff.
Perfect idea with all these water lines and if people have got power problems too. Look, we have all that storms and all people lost power. We had it all buried. Even if they just ran it forward thinking, just ran the conduit when they're doing it until they get around to it. Just makes sense. Good. I wasn't a complete idiot.
Thank you. What is that? We got anything in Vizetta? We have a project coming out of Vizetta?
Yeah.
Yeah. Water project.
I just have a quick question. We're not.
Beth Carmichael, Tourism Bureau.
Thank you, sorry. We're not requesting any money, but just generally, is there a deadline? I mean, if you've received this many requests, this dollar amount, is there a deadline? Like a time deadline? Because you guys, it sounds like this is all still open.
I'll, I'll turn this over to Tanya for that. She's, uh.
Yeah. So I don't know if the county has imposed a certain deadline for applications, but all of the funds have to be encumbered by the end of 2024. So they, they had to be encumbered by December 31st, 2024, and actually spent by December 31st of 2026. So there is a deadline for, for them to decide how to use the funds, which is December 31st.
But with Trumbull County, we don't have a deadline.
There is no, we don't have a, a, a structure or a process necessarily in place.
And that's something I guess we, we will have to talk about as a board as we get more efficient and we start putting these things through to Tanya and start spending the money a little quicker. The big thing now is there's been a backlog and we want to make sure everybody knows where they stand. Are they in? Did we do anything with it at all? Did we even get it? And, and I think we're establishing a lot of that through the last two days. And I could see the next couple of meetings, speaking on behalf of myself. Tanya is going to be pretty busy the next couple of weeks and so will Jim be as far as look at these things so we can see what's going to qualify and start getting some of the checks out to be utilized.
So how much do we have in each category left?
That's a good question, Tanya. Is, is the amount of money we have left have to be category specific? So if we spend it all in one category, that's okay. So we don't have to divvy evenly.
You could not spend it all on revenue loss. So I do apologize. Because you selected the ten million dollar standard allowance, you have ten million dollars in revenue loss. That leaves the, what, the twenty-eight million? That can be, that can be spent in whatever category you want. I mean, sorry, one of the other three.
I don't know how much we have in the revenue replacement portion.
Yeah, I have a list of the ones that I've approved. I don't know if it's actually been spent or not.
Who's doing the financing, financial keeping on that? Is that Mr. Masaki?
Sure has that on her report. Some of the numbers are what I call soft numbers. Because appropriations of monies, but they haven't been spent yet.
I wanted it all in one place so that we can.
If you don't know, for example, you're going to have a demolition building starting very shortly. There's two million dollars allocated for that program.
We don't know if that's going to be.
It's going to be two million dollars or more. Hopefully it's not. So you'll have excess money then. So it's very difficult to say this is.
It'd be really good to have all this in one place. What has happened? What has been applied for? What is being applied for? What has been spent? What's, what's already appropriated so that we know exactly how much is open in each category so that those projects can get in.
We, we do have, we do have two. One, revenue replacement on what's been spent, how much is left. And another chart on what projects out of the rest of the money, not including revenue replacement, what has been spent and what the remainder, remainder is in regards to that. But I see it doesn't show, it doesn't show the other thing. I see what you're looking at. I understand that. A little clearer.
For is logical. I'm just trying to give it the board a better tool and the public a better tool.
Any questions just regarding ARPA in general as far as can we do this? Can we not do this?
One thing that I wanted to bring up, and when I first came on board as a, as a commissioner, we had so much of the state come up and give a presentation on doing a performance audit. And a performance audit is something that's used to help the county identify how they could save money, do things more efficiently and just free up future, future money by comparing our county to others. That's been in the back of my mind because there's a cost associated with doing a state performance audit. And I was wondering about if any other community that you know of has used funds for that. Because I know that upcoming soon, I know that there's a, there's going to be, we've already, I didn't vote for it, but there's already been a, an increase in everyone's sewer bills and there's been an anticipated increase in water bills. So for me personally, I like to be able to see what we can do more efficiently internally before we do something like that. So I just wondered if that could be considered as an eligible.
I haven't had that request yet and I think I just have to have more information to see if it qualifies in any of the categories. It would, it would have to qualify in category one. It would have to be one. It wouldn't fit in the other three. So I would just probably need more information on it.
Dominic.
Danny.
Dominic Marquess, Johnson Townsend Trustee.
Has there been a consensus yet about when you guys want a deadline for any and all applications? You have to have a deadline sometimes.
I agree. I, I personally think that we need to wrap this up. We've already got more applications than we can, than we can fund right now. And if there are some other townships that haven't put any, or small villages that haven't put anything in yet, we need to say, hey, get this to us within a month, I'd say about a month, so that we can go through them as a board. Then at that point, and you know, potentially identify which ones we think are going to be the most beneficial for the, for the county.
The only problem with that is I don't know, all those applications and all those projects are fundable just yet. So you're going to say that we have X amount of dollars in applications.
It would have mattered if they're fundable. What do you mean?
If they're eligible to be projects under ARPA, a lot of the applications won't be funded. Right. They might not even pass legal.
Well, and if we decide to open it back up, we can open it back up again. And if we see some townships or villages, maybe one of their project didn't get accepted or wasn't eligible, then we can say, hey, you have a, a next project. And also, like we were saying before, if, if some places are submitting to or agree of them, prioritizing them would be good for us so we can know which ones.
I think it's up to the board to prioritize and not down. And that's why we have.
Oh, I agree. Why? I disagree.
We have scoring rubrics here. That's why we have scoring rubrics to objectify the process. And I urge the board to use a scoring rubric that I developed two years ago.
I disagree with how it was comprised and there are certain things that we need to.
Let's say, let's see if we can get a consensus and, and let's set a soft deadline. Six months from now, you have a township of six months, they get a meet, they get to discuss with their.
But it's not just township. You've got, you've got nonprofit organizations.
I understand. What I'm saying is let's, let's try to set a deadline. If you are working on a grant, they get it in by October 31st, we can start spending money before that. There will be money coming back after that, but at least give them something. That gives us almost another whole year to re-appropriate the funds before our deadline comes and passes again. Or our final deadline in December of 24. And it, it's something too that it gives them many chances for different meetings throughout the year to do that. At least setting something.
So twenty-something million dollar thing has already been spent or appropriated without, without a rubric. So I think that we do need to leave it up to the communities to pick out which project that they think would be best suited to them. That's just my perspective.
And I agree. And I, and what I've told Township Trustees in the meetings that I've gone to is I want every township to apply for something. There's got to be something you owe to your citizens to do the best you can do for them. And here's a chance that we're never going to get again. So pick your best project. It doesn't have to be two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand. Maybe it's one of them that I, that I looked at, I think it was like Estavis wanted to put a bathroom in their town hall where they have meetings where people meet and gather, that they gathered a lot for meetings, even during, during and after COVID. So there are things like that that I would say, don't take more than what you want, but find something for your citizens because we don't want to be responsible later from when citizens come up to us and say, how come we didn't get any COVID money? And if they're fiscal officer or trustee, never apply for anything. You know, we want to, we're here, we're saying, come on townships, give us what you've got. We want to help you. So help us help you in this process. Mr. Peg, Phil Peg, Bianna Township Trustee.
Bianna Township Trustee is my vice president of Trumbull County Council of Governments. Been exchanging the details. The council of governments has sent over questions and yes, we do share the same law firm. And Tanya has expressed the need to separate the two. But on our latest response, receiving funds from the county would be sub-recipient relationship. So you would not be able to use the funds under the revenue loss category. Okay. So I have that. Rather, you and the county would need to identify the basis for the fund transfer as well as how the funds will be used. I would recommend a sub-grant agreement. As far as Bianna Township, what we have submitted, I'm going to have to reset it after finding more information today, is in 2019, we were looking to purchase a new pumper truck. Our pumper truck's way over thirty years old, leased like a sieve, but we were going to purchase it in 2019. At that time, what was given to us was an estimated eight hundred thousand. Last week, we met with the same company. They are now telling us it's 1.2 million. So what we're requesting is a grant for three hundred fifty thousand approximately to offset what we've lost due to the pandemic. We still fully intend to spend that eight hundred thousand of our own money. And Tanya's question's simple. Do we qualify under that because the increase in two years with the pandemic?
That's, that's going to be a tough one that I need to look into of whether just the simple cost increase, paying the difference is going to be eligible. I've not looked into that specific question yet. And again, if there's any other area in your township that you do need something for that has been directly exacerbated by the pandemic, that could free up funds for it, that might be an easier route. And again, as he indicated, I, I do work with the Cog. If there's ever a conflict or if the Cog is requesting our advice, I have them go to a different attorney in my firm so that they're not getting different opinions or so they're not working both sides.
I understand.
Yeah. So I, I just need to look into that. I don't know if that, that enough. Well, I think for a lot of those vehicles that we approved before, they were in the revenue loss category. Because they can't, we can't issue a grant under the revenue loss category. We can't purchase something for another entity that would only fall into the revenue loss category.
It has to fall under one of those other three categories.
It has to fall under category one, category two, or category four. Yep.
I will say though, Mr. Peg, if, I'm not sure that's a question for legal, but the commitment from Bianna Township to, to have skin in the game, so to speak, when it comes to a project, should be valued by this board, well, you know, obviously a lot higher because it's a collaborative project and a community as well. You can put money towards it. Makes it a whole lot easier self-resister.
An example, Bianna Township also takes care of your board.
Right.
We're the primary backup to the airbase. An example, last week we had a fire in Hartford where there was no water. We sent our pumper truck to assist. About somewhere between a quarter and eight, Bianna has no public water. All those areas have to have water trucks in.
Julie Green, Planning Commission.
I don't have any questions. I did want to comment on Mr. McQuade's presentation today. I'm sorry I couldn't be there or yesterday. I don't even remember when he was there. But Russell McQuade, representing Matthew School District, was in attendance. And he mentioned the request for the sanitary lateral extension that Gary assisted him with, developing a cost proposal for. One thing that they omitted from their presentation was it's directly tied to yards. And the seven-year efforts of the Board of Commissioners and all of the affected townships, including Bianna Township and, you know, for the sustainability of the ours and its mission. So the plan, we've been trying to secure funding to get the high school rebuilt, relocated on that site. And that will be the long-term plan. Short-term, they're already planning on relocating the second elementary school on that site.
That one is a priority for me because of the impact with the study for the air.
He did explain moving the elementary school, putting the K through six all together. He didn't mention anything at all about the high school yesterday in his presentation, about the future, that possibly being future things. So that is pertinent to note that. If that's where they want to put that potentially someday, then, you know, that, that increases the need for water there also. That's the same site that could potentially be used in the future.
They have water, they need sewer. And when he presented, he told me that's the future site of the high school.
It's the results of the feasibility study that we completed as part of the MIS. And the second item I just wanted to update the commissioners on is the flood and drainage request for qualification statements. It's not flood and drainage, but flood plain. Request for qualifications for addressing the violations under the study. So that's currently on your website. It's on our website. And hopefully we'll get some qualification statements back to move forward with that and negotiate a price proposal. I don't know where, if that's already on your list. We don't have a definitive dollar amount yet.
We should have at least some time. That's what I mean. We have it as approved. We all committed to it. We have no idea what the cost because this is so new for everyone. I was just curious if there was a dollar amount assigned to it, like up to four hundred thousand. I guess we'll, I guess we'll find out. Okay, thank you.
One, one I wanted to bring up that is one that just came back, I saw yesterday, I believe, from Tanya, is the EMA Command Post, Mr. Hickey. We had that approved through Tanya in the last day or two, I think it was. And that is something that, that I would ask that you could be moving on quick with the price of vehicles going up and what we've seen in other vehicles, even county vehicles, leases that we had even with our sheriff's department. We approve it, they went to get it, they're gone. The program's gone, the prices are up, things have changed. So with the amount that we appropriated you, now that you've got the thing that you keep contacting Mr. Masaki and Tanya on how we get that to you the quickest way we can so you can go buy this vehicle now before prices shoot up on that again.
Wow. And following the procurement, that's the other, I have my procurement file here, but you can't see it right here.
So I'm working on the spec sheet for that now. We will definitely get the ball rolling. I had not heard that. So thank you. And we will definitely, we will have the share and we'll get, thank you all for your input.
That, that is a good point. I will, I will note for anyone, any of the townships who are applying for big purchases, under the revenue loss category, entities who receive the funds are only subject to Ohio procurement requirements. But under, under the other categories, if they're large purchases, they have to follow the federal procurement requirements, which are a little bit different. So it's just something to be mindful for. For like the pumper truck, for example, if that were approved, that would have to go through the federal procurement, or the bidding process rather than the Ohio bidding process. Just be aware of.
The total amount, even though our portion is lower.
Yep. Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Yes. Julie Green, thanks.
I've been helping the county building official and maintenance department on the Fairport projects. And that was one of the questions that came up was that is it subject to Davis Bacon? I downloaded something from CCAO that said that it's not subject to Davis Bacon.
It's not subject to Davis Bacon, the procurement requirements. The final rule clarifies that because generally, so all federal grants are subject to what's called the uniform guidance.
Right.
And it's hundreds of pages long. But a program can exempt certain requirements and that is one that was exempted under the final rule.
But it is subject to state prevailing wages and their thresholds.
Yes. So it is, it remains subject to state prevailing wage, but not Davis Bacon.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. There is one more thing that just, my memory was jogged, that I think that we need to address as it relates to the, to the fairgrounds. We're investing all of that money, but at the same time, we still.
We're investing all of that money, but at the same time, we still have not addressed any of the drainage problems there. So there, there's gonna be a new parking lot, a new building, we're still going to have the people parking lot where they're flooding. And I, I am willing, as the board is, to look into maybe tiling or something to help address the, the water issue there, because that's been an, I mean, that's been a problem forever. So for putting all that money in, I think would be good that if we addressed the drainage as well, as a board.
With the ARPA money?
We could, we could see, yeah, I think that that's a...
It's an ARPA meeting.
Stormwater management is generally eligible under category four.
Under category four, okay.
I agree with that, we've spent a lot of money on ARPA with the fairgrounds. Those are some other needs that are there, and we should probably address that today with the ARPA stuff. And the long-term things, the fairgrounds, possibly in other meetings, there's a lot bigger issues with that too, that I think we need to discuss as far as water, sewer, drainage, there's a bigger picture for that to make that place reach its potential. And I don't think ARPA is gonna be able to do all of it, although we are putting a lot of ARPA money into it.
You can end up with problems with the, what, what you're planning to do with the installation of the asphalt. You wanna make sure that everything is done properly, at least the drainage shouldn't cost that much. I mean, if you're looking at tiling as opposed, as opposed to running storm sewers, it, it probably would be more cost efficient. I mean, we could have a talk, we could try to get someone from the engineer, or even some farmers are probably real familiar with different ways to address that water without, without, in the most efficient way to control the storm.
I just think something like those impossible with the long-term plan thing there, to make sure we don't do something we're gonna destroy later. There's, there's also potential talks of paving the midway and stuff, we don't wanna do that if we need to put water lines under it first. There's transportation bill, monies may be available for that. So a long-term planning thing, in cooperation with the ARPA money we spend, is what I'm saying, maybe a special meeting just geared towards long-term planning that we can discuss or agree to hold that meeting with the entities you're talking about.
And the chief building officials, my understanding is, is putting together, making those decisions for the projects. Not for the, for the, not for the water, for stormwater. I talked to him about it, actually. So that's one of the reasons why I'm concerned, you know, I, I mentioned how's that gonna impact things, and there happened to be another contractor, because we were at another site when we were discussing, and then they were talking about the different ways to address the, the stormwater. So, I mean, I, I think he's good at what he does and insightful, I trust him.
Any other questions from any other entities regarding ARPA? Well, I just, I just wanna say this, I wanna thank everyone for their time. I'm glad Ed Agler was able to accommodate this building for us, we wanted to be more receptive collectively to the townships, and we know a lot of you worked during the day. So I'm happy to be able to spend an afternoon yesterday, and an evening tonight with you, as are all of our commissioners and staff. And this is something that, this is part of the process. The rest of it is, when you get the money, spend it the right way, showcase what you're spending, show your communities what you're spending, and make sure everybody knows, you know, that we are all in this together and our future plans, we're all moving forward together as a community. And this ARPA money is gonna help all of us be better, it's gonna make a bigger puzzle. If this isn't competition of one township versus another, who gets a better road than this, who gets a nicer playground than this? It benefits all of our citizens, because when the jobs come here, people are gonna live throughout the community, they're gonna recreate throughout the community. Especially when you get these rural areas, when we bring outsiders in that aren't born in a certain neighborhood, never leave their neighborhood, they are gonna utilize the whole county more and more and more. So we wanna work to make sure that that happens, and townships are... My number one priority, I believe Commissioner Francho has made the same comment, and Commissioner Cano Mesa, although he's a city boy, he's been working absolutely great with the townships through this process, so we understand, we wanna manage Trump County as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, I have been, it sounds like you have also been receiving calls from people all over, wondering why, what, what are the projects that have been applied for in my community? And that's up to you all, so that's why we're really hoping to get some good projects back, so we can say, hey, your, your trustee submitted this, or talk to people who are looking out for you, and we wanna make those things happen.
We have the opportunity, and I said before, we have the opportunity to do something very impactful, once in a lifetime. We talked about utilities like expanding water and sewer, and getting ahead of something like broadband, normally you're always behind. We got an opportunity to do that, and we need to make sure that we're taking advantage of that opportunity, that we're focusing on our townships as well, because I know the townships have been left behind. And there's always struggles financially, what you gotta do. We're here to help, we're gonna try to help as much as we can. We also have to look at the big picture stuff, we have to look at our nonprofits, we started our small business loan and grant program, so we, we try to tackle the needs on a lot of different issues, so we're gonna continue to do that.
And I guess lastly with that, my goal is to fund almost everything you can trust that you can, and help you get it through the system so it fits. But there are gonna be times where we're gonna have to make tough decisions here as a board, you may not get every penny you want. But know that if you're not getting it, someone else, a neighboring community probably is, the money's gonna be spent, we're not giving... Let's have a motion.
Motion adjourned.
First, one more, second, five.